Okay, looks like we're online and we're a couple minutes late and that's my fault. But it's, we're gonna have a work session this evening of 1:24 of 15. This will be our, actually our first work session of the new year. But we're gonna talk tonight a little bit about With Creek Road. I know we've had this subject before. We're gonna talk about the trees along the outer corridor and hear back from staff. We asked y'all to do some looking into a few things. And Randy, you wanna sort of set the stage for this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of council. You'll recall, we discussed elements of this in the month of December, I think it was, early December. And the subject at that time was to discuss the need to replace trees on With Creek Road and the general corridor because they got into the age where they were becoming a real hazard with regard to the sidewalks, the road system, the curb, and there's a myriad of safety issues because the trees had just gotten so large. They were really probably should have been replaced at 20 years and we're 30-plus and we're seeing that. And you asked us to come back after doing a little bit more research to try to narrow the potential number of trees down to a meaningful or a manageable handful. We've done that and we'll talk about that tonight. And we'll also talk about a fourth option, which is to actually go back with Bradford pears and replace them on the 20-year cycle like we could have done the first time. The reason why this is time-sensitive today is because this construction season, we're planning without objection to move forward, to repave the intersection and the general area. And in order to do that well and to spend the money effectively, we need to repair the curbs, we need to repair the sidewalks, repair any substructure that's been damaged. And so it makes sense, from staff's perspective, to go ahead and remove all the trees in that area, in the work area, replace and fix everything that needs to be fixed so that when we do the repaving, we're not immediately busting up the paving and having continuing problems with the trees. So for us, knowing whether or not you're comfortable with us moving forward in that manner is important because, believe it or not, we're gonna have to sprint to get it all done in time for paving season so that we can finish up with our replanting in October or November. Beyond that, we'll walk you through that. We do not need, as Tom's memory indicates, we do not need a decision today on what tree to replace it with. We need that in about the next 90 days in order to be able to get sufficient numbers, sufficient size, sufficient quality so they all match. But we hope by the end of the work session that you'll feel comfortable with us moving ahead and replacing the trees in the work area and we can begin that process and get it done this calendar year. Or alternatively, we may wanna wait a year and just make sure that we're comfortable with the entirety of the project before we move forward again so we don't have to see the road we just resurfaced and fixed, continually torn up by the tree. So with that, Tom, Mark, thank you and please walk us through it.
Go ahead and go. First, I'd like to thank council for allowing Public Works to do the second part of this presentation. This is in regards to the proposed tree replacement project. The following presentation is for the proposed tree replacement project. It'll be completed along the With Creek Road corridor to include parts of Victory Boulevard and Little Florida Road. This presentation will contain information regarding the proposed repair work and paving schedule that is in relation to the tree replacement project. And this, again, is the aerial map showing the location of where the trees will need to be removed. And this also has part of our paving schedule that'll be coming up this spring. Key points of the presentation is to provide information and cost estimates for the tree replacement, provide tree replacement options, provide cost estimates for the replacement options, provide information and cost estimates regarding repair work, provide information and cost estimates for paving schedule, and answer questions and concerns. This information here gives you the four options that we have chosen, that we would like suited council to look at and pick from these four options. Option number one is the crepe myrtle. Option number two is the Korean dogwood. Option three is the fragrant snowball. And then, as Randy pointed out earlier, option four would be to replace them with the Bradford pears.
And I just wanna say, that is an option. I kinda got it in there wrong where it kinda, we recommended it, but we just wanna give you that option to be able to do that because that tree, you know, it's just, it's a proven survivor. And anything that we do, when we put any tree back in there with the research that we've done, no matter which we pick, it's gonna have to go in the CIP, you know, 15 years from now to look at replacing those trees, no matter what we put. 15 to 20 years is the life of all those trees. So I just wanna point that out as we go.
Is the Bradford pear the tallest of those?
There's actually, I mean, we gave all the information before, but actually, there's a couple of them that get fairly tall.
No, I mean, of the three you got up top, would the Bradford pear be the tallest?
I have the Bradford pear would be like that, that number three option, it gets to be, you know, 35 feet tall as well. It just, it's one of those things that you have to put it, you have to look ahead, and I know sometimes it's hard to do that, but those have to be replaced in a timely manner. We can't let them go, no matter which tree we put. But all these are good roadside trees. Any one we pick, you know, will be a good tree to put in there, should be a good, we picked the three and gave that fourth one as the most healthiest and disease-free and less low-maintenance trees that we could possibly pick, so.
I've gotta disagree with the low maintenance and I've done some research. I looked it up from a grower's standpoint, and the Bradford pear grows at over two feet a year. So if you plant a nine-foot tree, within nine years, it's gonna be in the power lines and they're gonna look like they do now with the center cut out of them. They're known to be brittle. They cannot withstand a lot of wind. I think the Bradford pear would be the worst choice we could possibly make. Because if we're gonna be right back in the same place repairing curb and gutter sidewalk, it's probably in the storm drain system. I just, I totally disagree with the Bradford pear.
Our number one choice is actually, as they get, would be the crepe myrtle. But we wanted to throw that Bradford pear out there with, I guess, all that to be replaced.
Is there any cost differential between the breeds of the trees, the types?
The crepe myrtle's probably gonna be your most expensive tree.
Is that represented here? When you're talking about your per-tree estimate, when you get further down?
Well, what I did, what we did, this estimate that I have in here, I tried to take into consideration, you know, with whichever one you guys chose to try, you know, the way my estimate is, I couldn't give you an exact estimate.
That's fine.
So I think we can use any of the trees that you choose.
For about that price?
For what, you know, I think we can do it with some money. You know, we gotta count our pennies a little bit, but I think we can get it done.
Okay.
Any tree that y'all choose, we can get it done.
Yeah, I think if we picked up a different tree that was more expensive, you could do the spacing a little further. I mean, let's face it, 35 miles an hour, a tree every 100 feet, it's gonna look like 100 trees, a lot of trees. So I don't think we need them right up next to each other.
Okay. All right. But keep going. I'm sorry, I know we're jumping right in there because I know, I think council, and you can kinda sense it, that we're ready to make a go of this, but we definitely need to know everything that we're in for. So please, continue.
All right. Recommended planting season for any tree that we choose, this planting season usually starts around the end of October and goes into mid-February. If it's extended into March, then the tree professionals that we've been consulting with recommend that we put, use gator bags and, of course, set a watering schedule just to make sure that the trees do survive. We estimate a proposal to replace trees over a three-year period, and that's based on removing and replacing approximately 30 trees per year. Estimate for remove and grinding stumps, including removing all debris, is $450 per tree. So 30 trees would be $13,500. Estimated cost to purchase new trees, we figured $125 per tree. 30 trees would be $3,750. Contractor price to plant the trees includes digging, planting, mulching, fertilizing, and staking would be $150 per tree. 30 trees would be $4,500. And it'd be a total cost of $21,750. And I wanna add the note down at the bottom. This estimate that's up there does not include the repair for the curb and gutter and the sidewalks that'll need to be done in conjunction with the tree planting operation. And these are the tree choices that we have provided for you, are the tree options. Number one, again, is the crepe myrtle, and it gives just some brief information about each tree. You can get this tree, it is a blooming tree, it does have flowers. It comes in red, white, purple, pink. It even comes in a hybrid blue, but they're very expensive. So I just wanna throw that out there. This is the option two. Again, it's a, we picked all the trees that bloom so that they would replace the Bradford pears because we know that the public likes those Bradford pears when they bloom in the spring, spring and summer. Or anyway, second choice is the Korean dogwood. Your third choice is the fragrant snowbell. And then, of course, we went ahead and added the option number four in there, which is the Bradford pear.
Mark, a question.
Yeah.
I'm not a biology major, so the Korean dogwood, is that the same everyday dogwood variety we find in the woods around here?
Yeah, basically it is. It's a cross between the two different dogwoods, and I don't remember exactly which one they are. But it's a fairly good tree for being what they call a street tree, which you can plant along the streets. They have a good survival rate. They don't get that tall, 15 to 30 feet, and they have a spread of about 15 to 30 feet, you know, when they get to the full size.
I noticed in your cost chart in here that the cost was about the same for those as it was the others. You said $100 to $130 range for basically all three according to this cost sheet. And, you know, my personal experience of looking at the trees in the woods and those kinda things is that dogwood trees rarely ever get as tall as telephone lines. And I think the same could be said about crepe myrtle. I don't think they get very big and they go for, I think, more than 15 years. I think you can see those for a long time. And it would be a one-time thing rather than every 20 years. So I think, my personal preference would be one of those two choices. I think I would go with the dogwood. It's Virginia State tree and it's, they don't bush out as much over top of the roads. They do flower, but they don't branch out as much over the roads and I think it would need less maintenance. But anyway, that's my two cents for it.
I'd like to suggest that you look very seriously at the different types of crepe myrtle because they come in different heights, that they grow to different levels. They are extremely hardy and they're not 20-years trees, they're 100-year trees if they're properly maintained. You can grow them all over town where they're that big. And if you wanna see a sample of what they look like in a small-town setting, go over to Smithfield in the summertime. In the old section of town, those streets are lined with gorgeous crepe myrtles. And I think that would be, and they bloom all summer long. The other trees, you know, like, for example, the Bradford pear, I know it looks like every year when they come into bloom, we get a wind and a rainstorm and they're gone within days. So I would strongly urge the crepe myrtle as a preferred.
But they do require annual trimming.
They need, it can be trimmed and maintained in whatever height you want them to be maintained.
You can murder them and they grow back.
Yeah, I talked to a local person that does that and all he said was, the first few years, you know, we could groom those to come up in a single stalk. So we've done the research for any tree that you pick to see. If you've got any questions or whatever, I can send you the research that you've done.
I wouldn't agree with that, Ray.
I'd like to add something. I mentioned this the last time we discussed it, and that is that it might be interesting, maybe not doable, but potentially it is, to alternate trees. So plant a dogwood, then plant a crepe myrtle, then a dogwood. And that way, you would have different blooming seasons and different colors. It's just something to consider. I don't know if that would, you know, how that would look, but I think if you just stuck to two trees, it would be okay.
We did speak to the tree expert about using different trees as we planted. She recommended not to do that because there's a potential that one tree could get a disease and transform it to another tree. That'd be the only bad side out of doing it that way. Also, if one tree's more susceptible to insects, it might encourage the insects to go to the other tree as well.
It'll be far apart.
Yeah, we'd really have to be careful on which tree we pick as an alternate if you wanted to do it that way.
Well, all these tree choices are pretty much a second system. So I don't think that would make a difference on what we plan here. But one thing, you know, the main thing is, y'all have nine days to make that decision on how many we're, whatever. Our main concern or mine is, is to make sure, you know, that we're able to do this paving operation, you know, in an efficient manner. So that's, whatever choices, you know, we wanna make, you know, we're good with it and we're ready to move forward with whatever decision we make.
Let me jump ahead, restate, and then you can tell me if my recollection is correct. What you're looking for is a nod from the city council that they're good with your proceeding with the tree replacement program. And in the area that you're talking about relating to the pavement, I believe, there are 58 trees of the approximately 90?
Yeah, there's 96 all total and there's 58 in the paving area.
You're talking about essentially, instead of doing a three-phase plan like we talked about last time, going ahead and doing essentially a two-phase plan, do approximately 58 or so of them the first phase and then the following year do the balance. And my recollection is also that there's sufficient money exists in our highway paving budget and related to be able to do that without any additional appropriation from council if we phase it over the two years. Am I correct?
That's what I figured out, yes, sir.
I would tell you that Tom, Mark have done a tremendous amount of work, not only on this, but on the paving itself in order to be able to say that. So that's what we're looking for mostly this evening is, are you okay with us starting? And if there's a tree decision of any kind now or in the next 90 days, then that'll be perfect for our schedule. And we're not trying to force you to make a decision on trees quicker than you're comfortable, but we do need to hear with regard to the rest of it because our next step is to go ahead and get those 58 trees removed and begin the repairs. And that's a significant visual change in the city and not the kinda thing we would do without speaking with you and seeking your guidance on that.
Okay.
I'm ready to go forward.
Yeah, I think we should show the way with the removal. One question, Tom. Is it possible to save money that the city staff could do the removal and just sub out the stump grinder? I mean, use our three trash trucks and?
You know, I could probably work a deal out with, you know, the people removing the trees. I wouldn't feel comfortable removing the ones, you know, that are around the power lines even though they're, and we're really strapped right now. I've actually got, right now, I've already got three prices and, you know, I'm probably gonna look to get another one. If we can, if y'all give us the okay, we've got a really good price to have these trees taken out and removed. And the little bit I'm gonna save on that, I'm gonna move towards, you know, like I said, I'm giving you like a close ballpark figure, but the little bit I can save, and it's only if they can do it now before the leaves and stuff come on.
Right.
So I've got a really good price on getting that work done. And any money I save there, I'm gonna move it over to purchase the trees or to do, you know, so no money will be wasted. But I'll be glad to assist in removing the debris if I can get the price down lower. That is an option.
Okay. Let me try and keep us on track here. There's a couple questions that I've got. Can you go back to your paving? Because we certainly wanna support you. I know that the pavement there is also of concern. You've got a lot of-
You wanna jump all the way to the paving?
Forward.
Just to the sketch that you had that had the little bar outlet, bar of where you were going? Yeah, that one.
There you go.
All right. Now, and I'm trying to, I'm going by memory here, which is sometimes dangerous, but that looks like the entire scope of where trees are today.
This is actually for all the trees that need to be removed. This really is not the paving.
I got you.
The paving will start up here.
Okay.
Will come here just past the entrance to the 7-Eleven that's on With Creek.
Okay.
And it also encumbered this right through here.
But now, when you say you wanna subdivide this down, you know, and I appreciate greatly the fact that in two years of your public works budget, it makes sense to do it in two years. I guess from my perspective, there's sometimes there is a benefit to, we'll still program the money for two years, but we could always use the unappropriated fund balance or whatever you wanna call the fund balance this week. We could use the fund balance to basically do the project and repay it over two years of the public works thing. And the reasoning, my reasoning is, if we're going to do this, I would like to just get it done. So, and I think that sometimes that there's a benefit cost to cost to tool up at one time for the tree removal and that one time to do all the planting. And everybody in the city now knows that not only are we taking the trees down, but we are, it is a planned replacement of all of them. Because, you know, sometimes I get scared about phase-two programs.
We don't do phase-two.
Phase-two always worries me that we're not gonna get it done. So I think from my perspective and from council's perspective, we'll let staff figure out how big the project needs to be, but I think that we owe them not just 30 trees, but we're ready to go. And I think I'm clearly hearing that from every member of council here, that we're ready to do something about those trees. We're not gonna live with the damage to the infrastructure that you're seeing. We know you're under a tight timeline. Please proceed. And I guess the only other thing I would ask us is, how do we communicate this out there to the public besides we have a work session? I know we tell most of the groups recently that we've been talking to that this is something that we are considering. That's not to say that we touch everybody so that they know what's going on. So I would ask us, as you gear up to do it, that we also gear up on the communication side and let everybody know in every manner that this is a tree replacement program, not a tree removal program. And that will go a long ways to keeping Vicki off the phone with some of the folks. So if we can do that, then, and how do y'all wanna go about selecting a tree? We originally talked about, you know, farming out, y'all all wanna throw in, you know, we all have our opinions. I think Henry said red, white, and blue crepe myrtles over here. I was, I thought that was really good. But the bottom line is, I personally don't have a preference. I like all of those trees. So I'm good with whatever we select. So the question is, how do we select so that these guys can be prepared to plant in the fall without question and we're not waiting for weeks? So how do we?
If I may, I think that, I'm happy to just let you decide which tree you think will be the easiest to take care of. You know, your department, I'm not putting it on you entirely, but pick the one that has the roots that don't grow sideways and up or whatever. But I am okay with any of these choices. I lean towards the dogwood because it stays short, from my experience, but.
I'm sure it's the same kinda dogwood.
May not be.
Is everybody on the same page? The one comment I heard, and I heard very clearly that there were a couple people concerned about Bradford pears. Can we just take that option off the table? Does anybody really?
Yes.
I don't think that's a good option at all.
Okay. All right.
Just build the same problem we got now.
Okay. So we'll try a new experience. We'll try some change in the city and see if, what we can learn. And then, you know, I wholeheartedly say, you know, I know that the next most hardy tree in the city of Pecoson has gotta be the crepe myrtle. Okay? They're everywhere. They seem to weather well and you can cut them back well.
Don't think the roots go out really.
Yeah, they're not real fast. So either that or the dogwood. Can we just say one or the other?
Either one of those two.
I would be good with either one of those.
Okay. Just trying to listen to everybody in the various comments and, you know, the other one might be a very nice tree. I'm just not familiar with it and I know the other two, I think, are more native to what we think of, either a dogwood or a crepe myrtle.
One more thing too, Gene. I think it might be a good idea if we offered, you know, how at churches sometimes you can buy a pew or theaters, you can buy a seat. I think we have 100 people in town that might be interested in buying a tree and we could put up a plaque. So if we charged 150 for, you know, buy a tree in honor of somebody or in remembrance of somebody and we could put up a little stake with a metal piece or something, that's something to consider at least.
Would there be any administrative burden of that that we're not thinking of?
That's a good idea. I think we oughta advertise this on that TV channel.
Okay. But make it clear to everybody that we're gonna do them all. But if you would like to put one in memory or honor of somebody, that'd be great. Okay? And that may help with the knowledge out in the public of what we're doing. So that's probably a good idea.
Sounds good. So I think what we heard is, on Tom's recommendation, one or two, which he said he presented in order of their prizzle, so by default, that means one.
Okay, what was one?
Crepe myrtle.
Okay.
What I heard you say is, go ahead and replace the 96 trees rather than the 58 or the 30. If we need some money beyond what the public works budget can handle for the delta, which I think is 38 trees, more or less, we'll come back and you will consider appropriating money out of the undesigned fund balance. It's certainly not going to damage our finances in any way. And you like the idea, we need to do some public information, including the idea that if you'd like to go ahead and sponsor a tree for any reason, in memory of or in celebration of, that we figure out how to do that and give folks an opportunity to do that, which I think is great.
Between now and fall, so.
Sure.
Okay.
If you're saying, yeah, you got the okay, what I'm gonna do, so everybody knows, what I'll do is I'll take these 58 trees out first and work on grinding and get my curb and gutter replaced so I can get this paving schedule in before July 1st.
Oh, certainly.
And then you want me to move forward and take the rest of the trees out.
I want you to do it in the most effective way that you can, understanding your first goal is to do paving, okay? So I'm assuming if you're gonna contract this, it's not your paving contractor, maybe it is, I don't know. But bottom line is, that kinda, you tell him, I want you to start with these 58 and then get the rest of them. And he keeps going and y'all keep paving.
And when would you start tearing them down? Just so we know.
Next week.
Tomorrow?
I would start as soon as possible, but, you know, I talked to Mr. Wheeler there to see if he wanted to put something out, like on cable channels, something maybe for a week so the public, it's not a public outcry.
And I would, and like I said, every time I go talk to a group, and I know y'all all get invited to talk to various groups, please tell them what's going on because that's one of, and everybody understands. They all sort of get it, so. But, yeah, I think one general service announcement, maybe an article in the paper might help.
Absolutely.
Okay, of what we're doing.
One other thing, Gene, if I could, since we're kinda starting talking about pavement replacement. I noticed that in your information, you talked about milling and we're gonna be milling up the traffic loops. Have you looked into going to the Topcon technology that gets away from traffic loops so that when we have to do this again, we're not constantly spending $10,000, $20,000 doing traffic loops? The kinda, what I'm talking about is, it's a sensor that goes on the arm of the signal traffic sensor. There's no wires in the pavement, but what's gonna happen when they mill the pavement, they're gonna mill up the loops.
I understand. You're talking about those little things.
This is a sensor that senses traffic and tells the box when to change the light and you don't have to worry about sensors in the pavement.
Reset.
I would certainly check into that.
Yeah, and you-
I know they run, like in Hampton, I'm pretty sure they run, it's like cameras, actually. It's like, I mean, the Opticon is, turns the lights for the ambulances and fire trucks and the new system they have, but I think you have to have, you know, some pretty extensive stuff in the traffic. stuff in the traffic boxes as well. I'll have to get a cost on it to see what it costs us to do it, but I'll be glad to get that information.
Well, I know from my experience, it was probably 10 years ago when we did the main road at Langley, the cost of going to those was probably about $5,000 more per intersection than putting the loops in, but you're constantly tearing up those loops. So, and like you say, you can get the advanced one that will let the emergency vehicles change everything to red lights and go through, go through the lights and not have to worry about somebody broadside.
Just grant money out there somewhere.
We actually have those.
Okay.
We have those now.
So if you'll just take that and just.
Do a real cost, quick cost analysis of, it sounds like it would pay for itself in one paving season.
It will. If it's just that much, absolutely.
All right. Anything else in this work session?
I think that does it for today.
Okay.
Mark, did we catch all the important points from your perspective?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the work session and move to the regular session.